Welcome, everyone. I call this Craven County Board of Commissioners regular session to order. We remind everyone, you could please turn off your cell phones or electronic devices. I put them on to vibrate. It would be greatly appreciated. Madam Clerk, Roche.
Commissioner Booker.
Here.
Commissioner Jones.
Here.
Commissioner McCabe.
Here.
Commissioner Mitchell. Commissioner Sampson.
Here.
Vice Chairman Mark.
Here.
Chairman Leiner.
Here. If you'd please stand for the pledge or remain standing for the prayer. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father, thank you for our leaders you have chosen. The board searched their hearts and give them wisdom and discernment to lead our nation and county, and courage to stand for what is right. Bring peace to this Board of Commissioners, your presence to these halls. May our leaders never lose their individual uniqueness, but may they also never lose their unity as one. Prevent differences from distracting from purposes. Unite what others would try to divide. Restore what is broken. Thank you that we live in a country and county where we are free to live, free to believe, free to express. May we remember that we are not a country and county divided by different views or beliefs. We are a country and county of people united by your love as one body, one nation. Your word created this country and county. May your word sustain us. God, continue to cover, protect, and bless America and Craven County. In Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
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 Again, welcome to each and every one of you. Before I get started this morning, we've got a special group of people in the audience, and I want to ask each one of you to stand up and introduce yourself, and that's the Craven Leadership Council, if I'm not mistaken. Is that correct?
It would be correct.
Okay. Whoever wants to be first.
I'm Logan Palmer. I'm Facility Maintenance Manager for AMTEP. Happy to be here today. Interested to see what goes on.
I'm Kira Parker, the Health and Wellness Director at the YUCA. Thank you for having us.
Dr. David Townsend, Executive Director of Institutional Effectiveness at Craven Community College.
I'm Andrea Luchal, Donor Relations Manager at Trion Palace. Thank you for having us.
Casey Marianne, Manager of Human Resources at Carolina Esal System.
Rachel Thompson, I'm a CPA at Arson.
Thank you. Welcome to each and every one of you. Thank you for going through the class and everything else. We need it, that's for sure. Again, welcome to each and every one of you. Have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. First thing on the agenda, public hearing, economic development, Project Tiger. Jeff.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Good morning.
This public hearing is for the sale of one acre of property in the Craven County Industrial Park, Block 19, for what is known as Project Tiger. Craven County intends to convey in fee simple for economic development purposes the following tract of real property, the certain tract containing one acre within a larger tract identified as parcel number eight dash two one seven dash zero two five, for the consideration of $7,000 to Mr. Josh Lane. Mr. Lane, a local entrepreneur, intends to utilize the property for four and a half acres, being purchased from the Craven 100 Alliance by expanding his existing company Enviro Assessment East, as well as new business ventures. The value of the tract proposed to be conveyed is $20,000. The county believes the proposed conveyance will stimulate and stabilize the local economy, resulting in the creation of new permanent jobs in the county, and result in tax increase revenues estimated at $3,000 per year to the county in consideration of this action.
All right. Go into public hearing.
Motion to go into public hearing. Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We're now in public hearing. Vice Chair?
We have no speakers.
Okay.
Make the motion go out of public.
Motion in a second.
So moved.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing done. We're out of public session. Okay. Thank you, Jeff. Receive a motion to... Next on the agenda is consent agenda, minutes of October 7th, 2019, regular session, tax releases and refunds, National American Indian Heritage Month proclamation, and maintenance budget amendment for the new lift at the garage.
Make a motion for the consent agenda.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? Any comments? Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Booker.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe.
Yes.
Commissioner Sampson.
Yes.
Commissioner Mark.
Yes.
Chairman Leiner.
Yes. Okay, moving on. Department matters, first on the agenda, emergency services, Vanceboro Voluntary Fire Department, truck purchase, Stacy Lee, Chief, and Scott Gladson, Treasurer, and I guess...
Chairman, if I may get a first, would just like to remind the board that the purpose of what has to happen is, under contract, the fire departments have to inform the board of their intent to purchase new equipment, capital outlet equipment, especially those items that require additional financing. And there was a change in the agenda, and I passed out leaflets this morning to everyone showing the differences in that financial arrangement, and I'll let Chief Lewis explain this purchase.
Good morning, Chairman.
Good morning.
Commissioners, I come before you this morning to let you know the Vanceboro Fire Department is interested in purchasing a 2020 E1 Freightliner Pumper Tanker for the total of $293,545. We currently are... We'll go with Civic Federal Credit Union for a $120,000 financing for 10 years at 3.05%. Payments will be $1,161.66. Currently, the Fire Department, the time of delivery should have $143,545 in our truck fund reserve at the Fire Department. Here today requesting an additional $30,000 out of the Fire Department's fund balance. We have it for 10 years, but our plans are to make some extra payments and get it paid off before then. Our last truck we purchased in 2012 was a 15-year loan through USDA, and we had it paid off in six and a half, almost seven years. So...
Jack, I've got a question for you. Seems like there's maybe two issues.
Yes.
One, to approve the truck, and one to approve the funding dollar reserve. Is that not correct?
Right. Well, one is to have no objection to the truck, the purchase of the truck, and the second would be to authorize Craig to have a budget amendment from Vanceboro's Fire Reserve account on our side for $30,000 for the purchase of the truck.
Okay, that's all in one motion?
We can.
Okay.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion in a second. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I would just say, you know, Vanceboro has a long history of being very frugal with county tax dollars. They have always stepped up to the plate to have a truck fund, I mean, you know, and to reserve funding so that they didn't have to go out and borrow so much. We have people that question, or citizens that question, why we have, some of our fire departments have a reserve fund as high as they are, and these are the reasons for that. And so I commend you and the Board of Directors for what you do, and for being able to have this much money there. This new tanker will be an asset, definitely, to the Vanceboro area, to let y'all serve, and again, thank you for your service.
Thanks, sir.
Any other discussion?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to say that Vanceboro Fire Department is probably one of the finest fire departments to have, and congratulations.
Thanks, sir. And just, this truck is going to replace a few tankers that have some age on them. This truck here is actually a Pumper Tanker. It'll be actually in one of our first-out stations, actually the main station for first-out pumper, but this truck is replacing the 78 Atlas that has served us very well throughout the years, but I thank y'all for your comments.
Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Booker.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe.
Yes.
Commissioner Sampson.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Mark.
Yes.
Chairman Leiner.
Yes. Chief, thanks much.
Thank you. Y'all have a good day.
Okay. Okay, next on the agenda, planning, 2020 U.S. Census Partnership Resolution. Don Baumgartner?
Good morning.
Good morning, Don.
We've been contacted by the U.S. Census coming up in 2020 that there's a process we can undertake that enhances the ability for our citizens to be counted, and as a result of that, that would directly affect our revenue sharing for the next 10-year period prior to the next census. As a result of this, they have created a Census Partnership Resolution for units of local government to consider and to adopt. At this particular time, we are requesting that the Board of Commissioners adopt the 2020 Census Resolution. The county is agreeing to support the goals of the 2020 Census, to encourage all county residents to participate in events and initiatives that will raise the overall awareness of the 2020 Census and increase our participation. Each of you, I believe, in your agenda, got a copy of that Census Resolution, and at this particular time, in order to move forward with that, we would need to adopt the resolution and grant the Chairman the authority to execute the document.
Motion in a second. Any discussion?
I just think it's really important that the public understand how important the census is.
Yes.
As the... Some of the states in the Northeast are losing population. Our state is gaining.
Correct.
And as we gain population, we gain representation and other programs that are based on population. So, you know, I think a lot of people take the census kind of like, it's no big deal. It doesn't matter. It really does. It really means that everybody needs to participate in this census.
I think we're actually on the verge of possibly crossing one of the thresholds for additional federal representation.
Representative, right, to U.S. Congress.
Correct.
Mr. Jones?
Here in number three, under the... It resolves, it says, "Provide CCC members." Is this... What does that stand for, CCC?
Correct Count Committee.
Okay.
We have a group that was selected early on in the process to serve on that committee. Each of the departments that would have a lot of interaction with citizens, especially those sometimes that are a little hard to be able to contact and be able to stress the importance of completing the census when it comes. So we've made an extra effort here at the county level to try to assist in the process of being sure these people end up being counted.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other questions? I have one. I've got to piggyback on Commissioner Booker. People do not realize the importance of this census. This state has grown. This county has grown. Each person that's counted on this census represents about $1,100 to $1,500 of federal funding coming into this county for funding. Depending on what we gain or what we lose is what we're going to lose in federal dollars coming in here. In the 2010 census, we lost quite a bit. We had to even challenge it because we had $2,500. Lost it, if I'm not correct. Mistaken on that. That's a large sum of money. But keep it in mind also, a lot of people are scared and worried about the census. This is strictly confidential. This is strictly confidential. The census takers, you can do it by computer, you do it by mail, or you'll do it one-on-one. They have to sign an oath, and they're bonded. So it's a $250,000 fine and a five-year prison sentence for releasing any information taken. So we've got to make sure that population understands strictly confidential on that, and there's some scams out there. There's people already coming around saying they're here for the census. All of these census takers have a badge and have a tag on them that shows who they are. If somebody drives up into your area on a bicycle, you can bet your wallet they're not from the census. They're not going to be there. So if we can get the word out to all the population, we need everyone to participate in it. This state has a possibility of gaining another congressman for the size of what this state's getting, and that means a lot for what we can get for this state. So I would encourage everyone to participate. We've got three areas to do it in now: computer, mail, and one-on-one. And a lot of these different functions, it's going to be around the state. They're already out there doing some of it, so I would go through. All right, we have a motion. We have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Don, thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you all.
Okay, next on the agenda, economic development, Project Tiger. Jeff Wood.
Good morning again.
Good morning.
Good morning again.
Just to reiterate some of the things I said earlier, this is for sale of one acre of property that we own. This property by itself has no development of value. You can't put anything on it. It's on the corner of Manufacturing and Executive Parkway. However, for Project Tiger, Mr. Lane, it helps with his environmental permitting. This will create an investment of at least $800,000 and create/retain 25 jobs. And also wanted to point out some of the ramifications of some prior investments from this commission. This is part of a sale of 13 acres to the Craven 100 Alliance, where they built their Shell Building. You saw the news where that building was sold, and so you're looking at that entire development where you guys sold the 13 acres and then also increased infrastructure, water and sewer, by $125,000 with a gift from Duke for $25,000, has resulted in a total of about 35 jobs, $40,000 to $75,000, or $40,000 to $80,000 a year, and about a total investment of $3 million. And so has been a strong success, and in about a 12-month time period as well. So a quick turnaround. With that, any questions?
Entertainer motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Just a quick comment. Friday with the manager and assistant manager, I was out at the site. I looked at it. I totally agree. That site has no value except for the person who's going to have the property decided. So I think that makes total sense to go ahead and do this.
Mr. Jones?
Mr. Chairman, I would just like to state, you know, Project Tiger is an investment by a family who has lived here in Craven County for many years. They have a vested interest in our county. I believe they're going to remain here. I think one of the concerns that I've heard from our constituents over the years is incentive packages that we have always given has been to large corporations, and nothing wrong with that in trying to entice, you know, job development here in our county. But this is an investment back into small business that I think is probably one of the first. I'm not going to... I may be wrong, but I think I'm right, that I've seen during my tenure on the board. I'm excited about that. I commend you and the Craven 100 Alliance for doing that. I think that's what we should be about, not just focusing on large corporations, but also small. And again, I will say, I think this is an investment that will stay here in this county for many, many years. So, thank you.
Any other questions, comments? We have a motion in a second. Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Booker.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe.
Yes.
Commissioner Sampson.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Mark.
Yes.
Chairman Leiner.
Yes. Jeff, thanks.
Sure.
Okay, next on the agenda, finance, Greg Warren, Finance Director, three items.
Good morning. I have several items on the agenda for you this morning. The first one is a budget amendment for Hurricane Dorian in Florence. Due to Hurricane Dorian, which passed through the area on September 6th, 2019, the county incurred significant and unexpected costs for the preparation, response, and recovery efforts of the storm. On October 4th, the county was approved for federal disaster declaration, which will allow us to seek reimbursements for the majority of the cost. The costs incurred for this event were mostly due to the opening of the EOC, along with additional hauls that were needed at our convenience sites for the storm debris. There were some damages to county facilities, however, they were very minimal compared to Florence. In regards to Florence, there were some costs that have carried over into the current fiscal year. Those costs include consultant fees for work performed on the county's ongoing FEMA projects, in addition to several repairs to county facilities that were not able to be completed due to contractor availability. The $4.8 million that we appropriated last year for Florence, approximately $351,000 at year-end, was unspent and rolled into the fund balance. It is requested of the Board to consider approving the budget amendments appropriating $200,000 from fund balance in order to cover the associated cost with these two storms.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve.
Motion. You have a second? Motion in a second. Any discussion?
Only one question. How much have we gotten back from FEMA?
So far, we've had one project that we have successfully completed, and that approximately was a reimbursement of $251,000, and that was mostly on the mold remediation throughout several of our facilities.
Any other comments, questions? I have one.
Yes, sir.
Are you saying your $351,000 was not used and rolled back?
That's correct.
But you're asking for $200,000?
Yes, sir. $150,000 for Dorian and $50,000 for Hurricane Florence. This is what we are projecting, what the estimated cost to... for these two storms, or at least for Dorian.
You rolled back $351 for Florence, but you still need $50,000 more remaining for Florence.
Yes, sir.
So why didn't you just... Well, because it's this year's budget.
Yeah, because it was approved in last year's budget, so that appropriation...
Got a motion in a second. No further discussion? Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Booker.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe.
Yes.
Commissioner Sampson.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Mark.
Yes.
Chairman Leiner.
Yes.
Okay. The second item is a resolution designating agents for the public assistance grant application. As you are aware, Craven County was included in the major disaster declaration approved by the federal officials on October 4th, 2019. In order to begin the process of seeking reimbursement under federal assistance grant program, the application to the state must be submitted. As part of the application, the state requires the Board to adopt the attached resolution in your agenda designating the primary and secondary agents. It is requested at this time that the Board adopt the resolution authorizing the county manager and finance director to act on its behalf.
Mr. Chairman, so moved.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Go ahead, Greg.
Okay. The third and final item I have on the agenda for you this morning is an update to the Convention Center Recovery Project ordinance and the associated budget. Included in your agendas for this item is an updated project ordinance and budget amendment. The original ordinance was... and budget was for this project was adopted at the June 17th, 2019, board meeting, with a total project budget of $1,386,000, and included all of the contracts awarded at that time for our architect and engineering firm, Oakley Collier, and our HVAC contractor, SE&amp;M. Since then, we have awarded the primary construction contract to Barnhill in July, and in September, the county closed on the financing that will fund these improvements. Now that these figures have been finalized, an update to the project ordinance and related budget is needed. As you will see from the project ordinance attached in your agenda, the total expenditures budget are $10,158,167. That total includes all contracts awarded to date. Other project costs include some ancillary costs for debt issuance, an estimate of $250,000 for the replacement of furnitures, fixtures, and equipment, and a 10% contingency. Budgeted revenues for the project also total $10,158,167, and consists of the $10 million in the loan proceeds and $158,167 budgeted transfer in from the occupancy tax fund. The final phase of this project, which is currently in design, and once that contract is awarded, I'll come back before you to update this one last time with those numbers. The funding sources will be adjusted at that time to include a combination of transfers in from the occupancy tax fund and any insurance and FEMA proceeds that we collect in the general fund. The attached budget amendments in your agendas is needed to adjust the budget within the project fund in order to reflect what you're seeing on the project ordinance. It is requested at this time that the Board approve the updated project ordinance and related budget amendment.
Receive a motion?
So moved.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? Any comments?
What was the interest rate, again?
2.2% on that 15-year note.
That's pretty good interest rate.
Yes, sir.
No hearing then. Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Booker.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe.
Yes.
Commissioner Sampson.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Mark.
Yes.
Chairman Leiner.
Yes.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda, Facilities Recreation Resolution for Exemption of Design Services for Recreation Administration Facility from Qualification-Based Selection Process. Gene Hodges.
Good morning, Board.
Good morning.
At the September 23rd, 2019, work session, the Board of Commissioners received a presentation related to space needs in the County Administration Building. During this presentation, an option to build a new Recreation Administration Facility located at Creekside Park was presented to the Board. The new facility will free up two office suites in the Administration Building that will allow for consolidation of IT staff and provide needed space to the Human Resources Department. The Board directed staff to move forward with this project. Due to the estimated cost of design and engineering fees being less than $50,000, staff is requesting that this project be granted an exemption from the qualification-based selection process, so the RFQ process, and to proceed with contracting with Oakley Collier Architects to provide these services. The construction phase of the project will be bid through the typical request for proposal, the RFP bidding process. To grant the exemption, the Board must pass the resolution shown in Attachment Number 7, which has been prepared by the county attorney. We also have the longest board action in history also prepared by the county attorney, so I'll help you by at least asking what we're requesting. What we are requesting is to pass the resolution to exempt the architect-designed services for the Recreation Administration Facility project from the qualification-based selection process, to authorize the management staff to prepare a contract to serve the purposes and needs as presented and discussed, and authorize the Chairman, Vice Chairman, Manager, and Clerk to execute and deliver the contract once prepared, as well as any other ancillary documents which may be required to fully implement the contract.
That is about as clear as mud.
So what we need is the resolution to get passed, and basically then that's the authorization for us to contract with Oakley Collier to contract with them for the design services for this building.
So moved.
Receive the motion. Second?
Second.
Motion in a second. Discussion?
I think, simply stated, this says we don't have to go to the bid process to select an architect, correct?
Is the RFQ process correct.
Any other comments? Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Booker.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe.
Yes.
Commissioner Sampson.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Mark.
Yes.
Chairman Leiner.
Yes. Mr. Hodges, thank you. Don't leave. I understand you're next, Water Selection of Engineer for Water System Telemetry Repair.
Yes, sir, and I've got water staff here if we've got questions about this system. When Hurricane Florence struck Craven County, the water system telemetry/SCADA system that serves the western part of the county's water system was severely damaged. This system is the communication system that shares information between the wells, the water towers, and the water plant that allows the water system to operate properly. Since the hurricane, the system has had a number of failures, and each site requires daily in-person inspection and manual adjustments to prepare proper... to maintain proper working function. A request for qualifications in RFQ was issued for engineering services related to the design and implementation of a telemetry SCADA system on July 23rd. Five firms submitted proposals, and after they were rated by the review panel, three firms were invited to come in for interviews. After the interviews, the panel recommends that McKimmon Creed of Raleigh, North Carolina, be selected as the engineer for this project. Attachment 8 contains the rating sheets for the RFQ responses and the rating sheets for the interviews. Their knowledge, McKimmon Creed's knowledge and experience with telemetry SCADA systems and the Craven County water system put them in the best position to provide the county with the professional engineering services required for this project. The next step will be negotiating a fee in terms of a contract with the selected firm. As the scope of the renovations and the budget develop, the Finance Director will set up a capital project budget that will include all the costs... a capital project budget that will include all the costs, staffs available if we have any questions. And again, as our county attorney asked me to revise our actions a little bit, we also have to select McKimmon Creed as the engineer for the telemetry SCADA repairs, and to, one, authorize the management team to prepare a contract to serve the purposes and needs as presented or discussed, and, two, authorize the chairman, vice chairman, manager, and clerk to execute and deliver the contract once prepared and any other ancillary documents which may be required to fully implement the contract.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
You have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Any comments?
Mr. Chairman, if I may. Al, is this, we've got water pressure in western Craven County that's just terrible, especially in recent months. Does this have anything to do with that? Will it help you once it is repaired to where it's supposed to pre-storm?
Yeah, in fact, this will give us reliable communication compared to the antiquated system we had before. Try to replace what we had was not worth trying to put back what was there because it's so old, just like Bailey phone lines. But yeah, we have had some issues because we're not communicating between the towers and the plant, so a tower will go a little bit too low, and when it gets low, your pressures are going to drop. We have been actually going out and visiting these sites to try to keep from that happening again. There is a mechanical way to do it by putting pressure valves on the, on the tank itself, but you still have to have a man to go out and look at them to make sure that the water's at least in the bowl. So yes, just to answer your question shortly, this, this will make a vast improvement over that.
What will be our timeframe in getting this project completed?
Well, we have a scope we've developed, so we do have a definite plan. And with the engineering firm that I feel like if you approve them to do this, we'll be able to move fast enough on there, but maybe, hopefully, I'd say in less than a year's time. And I'm hoping I'm pushing faster than that. I mean, I know they'll give me a, you know, a scheduling, and it looks like they've kind of put a few days in there extra just to cover themselves, but I'm, I want it done a little bit better, quicker. I mean, we need it.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Anyone? Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Booker?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Commissioner Sampson?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Mark?
Yes.
Chairman Leiner?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Gene, that's all for you, right? Okay. Next on the agenda, Health Department, Scott Harrelson, Health Director. Three items: new fee requirements, additional family planning, purchase of child health immunization.
Yes, sir. Good morning, gentlemen.
Good morning.
I come on behalf of the Health Department and the Board of Health for these three agenda items. And the first is hospice in regard to some Medicare adjustments and their rates. And I did want to make the distinction, the last four on your list for fees are really contract rates. They would not be billed to Medicare there, but they are contract rates that need to be updated as well. And I think the, the largest increase will definitely be, and something that we do on a regular basis, is the inpatient respite care, where it increased from $170 to $440. That's the, the largest increase that we bring to you this morning, and I'll be happy to answer any questions. Right now, I did want to inform you that our hospice program is running a census usually in the 40s, so they are very busy.
Entertainer motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Booker?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Commissioner Sampson?
Yes.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Chairman Leiner?
Yes.
Thank you. Next up, agenda item is for our family planning type 10 clinic. There was recently a Medicaid study done on where dollars flow in North Carolina, and actually, the family planning program was one of the least expensive and most impactful programs in the state. And this is something that came out to all of the health departments. I, I don't know if it's a result of maybe the Planned Parenthood not receiving federal funding or where this additional federal fund came from, but they basically came back and recently notified us that we could receive $29,205 in additional funds for our family planning clinic. And we were going to put that directly back into the clinic, the clinic supplies, and also the nurse practitioner, contract nurse practitioner that provides the program.
Receive a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Booker?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Commissioner Sampson?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Leiner?
Yes.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Vice Chairman Mark? Chairman Leiner?
Did you call me?
Yes.
No.
Thank you, gentlemen. Next, and the last agenda item we have is for our child health clinic. We actually received some of our 10% Medicaid payment holdback from previous years from DMA, and it was, so it was unbudgeted funds. We never really know when we're going to get those. They can be several years later, in fact, but we would like to take $25,000 and put this towards the purchase of some vaccines. We have had a real uptick in the number of private stock vaccines we've given, usually to children. I think a lot of these revolve around our seventh grade immunizations, and about 320 more this year than we had last year. And as you can see, some of these are as high as $207 a dose, so they are very expensive vaccines. One question that the Board of Health had was, will we be reimbursed for these? And, which is a good question, and we did look into that, and the third-party reimbursement is more than a $207 for things such as Gardasil, so we are receiving money for those.
Got a motion? Second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Booker?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Commissioner Sampson?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Mark?
Yes.
Chairman Leiner?
Yes.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. You can stick around, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay, next on the agenda, appointments pending, current, and upcoming. Let's see. I think, let me see, pending appointments is adult care advisory, nursing home advisory, New Bern Planning and Zoning. I think each, all of us got the listing of the New Bern ETJ for this New Bern Planning and Zoning Board, so if you've taken a look at that.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I had said I would call these. I went through them to see if I recognized any names. This is going to take a little time as there's no phone numbers on here, and I have to look up the phone numbers as I go along the list, but I'll, I'll try and have somebody by the next meeting.
New Bern College Board of Trustees, we're going to hold that until after the first of the year. Is that not correct, manager?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Senior legislators, Tarheel Alternate, if anyone has that one, please take a look. You have nomination. I've got to see what I got back here. That's, that's important for our seniors. We need to have an alternate on there. They, they have, meet quarterly, and then they have a semi-annual conference in Raleigh, and that's important to have somebody sit in that for our senior legislators on that. Other than that, let me see, we've got, what's the position? The application I have on here that's in the file, who was it?
You got two current, Mr. Chair. You got the voluntary agricultural district, Ricky Harrison represents District One, Commissioner Mark, and he wishes to be reappointed on page 14.
So, so moved.
Okay. Did everybody have that in their package? Because I didn't.
It's on your appointment page, point, page 14 of your agenda.
Okay.
It's item B.
Okay. I'm sorry.
Yeah, yes, sir.
Okay. Okay, by acclamation, he's reappointed. Okay, Fire Tax, Charles Dudley has submitted the application on 10B seeking appointment to Fire Tax Commission to fill a vacant created by the death of Bobby Brody, and we have one application, and that's Charles Dudley. Is there, that's District Five.
Yes.
Is that all right with you?
Yes, sir.
You, you recommended him?
I recommend Charles Dudley.
Okay. Any other, any other nominations? By acclamation, he's appointed.
Thank you.
Okay. Upcoming appointments, juvenile crime prevention, Fireman's Relief Fund Board of Trustees, Recreation Advisory Council, Bill Taylor, and Regional Aging Advisory Board. Okay, here comes the best part of the day. County Attorney's Report.
I don't know, Mr. Chairman. I thought Mr. Hodges might disagree with that for a second. Good morning. I have two items for the board's consideration this morning, both of which appear in your agenda and agenda packet. The first item is for the Redwood Terrace Mobile Home Park. We have had some pretty significant issues with that park recently, and I would even go so far as to say, over the years, we do have a mobile home park ordinance in the county, and this park has numerous longstanding and repeat violations. Planning staff has documented what needs to be documented, and we have received instructions to move forward with a civil action to compel enforcement or to, you know, generally do something about the situation. We have a resolution in the packet for your consideration. Due to a slight change in the law over the summer, the Court of Appeals held that when a local government proceeds in court, we have to have very specific authorizing action, and if we do not, then the particular court does not have subject matter jurisdiction to address the matter. So we want to make sure that we've dotted the i's and crossed the t's, and for that reason, we have presented a formal resolution that would be very easy to tender in court if we are ever required to. And of course, once we file suit and, and proceed with the matter, we'll keep the board informed of the progress and what's coming down the pike. So for now, subject to questions and comments, I would ask that the board approve the, or the resolution as presented in your agenda packet.
Receive a motion?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Motion and a second. Any comments?
Mr. Chairman, may I, may I just add in? I wanted just to, and I'm glad Don's here, I wanted to relay that we don't take this decision lightly to bring this before the board, along with our legal staff. We've reached out numerous times via telephone, via letter, any way that we can possibly reach owners of this park. At this point, we asked for a meeting back in August, and we've still not received a response to meet with myself and Don and Ari to talk about how we can move forward. We have no other option at this point but to file a lawsuit and hope that, you know, it gets resolved in the meantime.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, this is in my district, and I've had a lot of calls about it. If you will go through, once you file a lawsuit, what, what's the process after that?
Well, you know, certainly, there are two primary courses that the matter could take, and, and they are dependent on whether the defendant contests the lawsuit. If the defendant contests the lawsuit, then I will, will say we, we have more hoops to jump through. We have to, you know, prove our case through discovery or an open court. We would quite possibly have planning staff and others testify. It's a, it's a lot more work, so to speak. If the defendant does not respond, then the court is able to summarily enter relief, and that's what the court would do in either case, is enter relief in favor of the county. We're very confident of our position. The court can certainly order the owner to take corrective action, to bring the park up to standards. Such an order would carry with it the possibility of being held in contempt of court, civil fines, all kinds of bad repercussions. The, the problem with this case is I believe the owner is actually in California, so, you know, how do you, how do you get to California to enforce that type of judgment? My, my suspicion is we will have no response, no response, no response, and then at some point, hopefully sooner rather than later, the court will look at the county and say, go do what you got to do to address this issue. There would be cost involved should the county have to actually remediate the issue. Fortunately, those types of costs can be added to the tax bill, and we would have the ability at some point to recoup some or perhaps all of those costs. So I, I, I think Gene's writing a note right now about the wordiness of the lawyer, but I think at the end of the day, we, we can address the problem. It's just how many hoops we have to go through and how much of the work will we have to do directly. So, and that has been our marching orders from the management team to do what we need to do to fix it once and for all.
Mr. Chairman, last thing I would just add, you, you take a mobile home park like this, when it was created years ago, formed, you know, it, it's been a great park until the former, the present owner died and, or sold it, whatever, and since this group has gotten it, I mean, it, it has ruined the whole community, people say, because of the way it looks, you know? It's grown up, and, and I wouldn't want it beside my house either. And so, you know, I, I understand the concerns of the community in wanting something done, but there is a process, and I thank you for going through that process and explaining it.
Any other comments? I agree with a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The other item is a initial offer to purchase on real estate that the county owns by virtue of a tax foreclosure. The property is parcel number 9044134. It's out on Drymonia Road. The initial offer is in the amount of $2,800. The total cost and taxes from the underlying tax foreclosure were $2,239.57. The current tax value is $9,000. As the board knows, the process would be, if the board is inclined to accept the initial offer today, we would advertise the property for upset bids, and we'd either pursue an upset bid, or the matter would be back in front of the board at a future meeting for final approval. We would appreciate a motion to approve the offer subject to the upset bid process if the board's inclined to proceed.
Got a motion and a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. I have a question for you, Jack. Is it mandatory by state, by statute, that we go out for upset bids?
Yes, sir. It is. The, the only exception, the board may recall, we had a taxpayer that lost property through a tax foreclosure, and that taxpayer said, I want to buy the property back. That's the only exception from the, the upset bid process.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Now we got county manager.
Mr. Chairman, see, all this time, I thought this was your favorite part of the meeting. Now I know it's the attorney's report.
No, this is, this is.
Second favorite.
This is the bottom.
Yeah. End of the road, right?
End of the road.
Well, commissioners, I got a good bit of things to talk to you about this morning. A lot of it's good news. I'm just exceptionally proud that yesterday we opened the Convention Center back to where it should be. We hosted Reelo Drug and Carolina Home Medical. They have an annual employee meeting. I think Commissioner Booker actually even stopped by yesterday to, to visit with them. But this was 13 months in the making. A lot of hard work. We're not done. Still a lot of work to be done. I was in there Friday morning with Gene and, of course, Commissioner Booker, and it just looks amazing. I'm really excited about what we have to offer folks to come back to Craven County and enjoy our facility. When I say that, we have a lot of work left. I mean that we got open, we needed to be back open. Our impact on the county as a whole from tourism, sales tax, all the things that we help generate is so vital to this community. So as we work through events, we'll still be doing work in there. Mr. Hodges, I believe probably up until July, I feel pretty confident we'll be working through the summer. Just additional things that we can't do while we have events staggered really close. So we'll need some additional blocks of time. We'll look for slow moments in our schedule, but again, I'm just, I'm really thankful for Gene and Craig and Ari and our whole Convention Center team who've worked really, really hard to get it back open, and thank you of the board for your support in helping us get there. So I'll start with that. Second, I am also pleased to announce that one of the budget initiatives this year related to our opioid task force plan was to hire an opioid awareness coordinator. Amber, Gwen, and I worked over the last month interviewing folks for that job. We had a great candidate pool, and we're proud to announce that we have hired Jasmine Kennedy to fulfill that role. Jasmine is currently working in the Health Department, sorry Scott if you're still here, but she has a qualification, a skill set, a great background in technology, particularly working as a videographer, working for a local news station. She's had a really, really great career, a lot of energy. I'm gonna have her here at your next meeting to meet you, and we look forward to her working to help our folks who are suffering from this crisis.
Where are you gonna put her?
She'll be downstairs, she'll be in this building. Yep, actually, one of the votes you took earlier to build the new parts of rec building allows for us to go ahead and move her in here and free that space up. We had our second session of our Citizen Academy, Connect Craven, or Craven Connection. It was at the airport, they did a great job hosting us, Andy was very gracious in allowing us to use their facility. He also gave a great rundown of what the airport does, but we had other folks there, like our planning staff, Solon Water. I gotta tell you, I'm learning something every meeting. I know the chairman's been through a couple sessions with us, and just amazing the amount of work that gets done every day by our county employees. So I'm really proud of them, I'm really proud of the citizens, they're hanging in there. I mean, we envisioned a three-hour session every week, and it's more like four hours, but they're hanging in there, and...
We have not, we have not lost one.
We did, we lost one.
One, she didn't come.
That's correct. We lost one, but everybody's real enthusiastic about it, and I'm pleased because we got a great diverse geographically group of people from all over the county who are just interested in what we're doing, so that means a lot. And lastly, I'm often reminded, as I visit departments, and I had the opportunity on Friday with Commissioner Booker finishing up his new commissioner tour, of what some of the work we do, and I just pinpointed the Veterans Office. We stopped by and saw Jeff and Jerry, our new Veteran Service Officer, and the two young ladies that worked there, and I'm just amazed at the amount of work that comes out of that department, and what their mission is. And sometimes you gotta step back a little bit and think about, their job is to help veterans who've given so much to our country, and they deserve these benefits that we work hard to get on their behalf. I pulled their report, and I know you guys get it every month, but I pulled it out to highlight a couple things in here, and this is of course a September. But as we started this process in 2016 with the board's indulgence to allow us to try to pull it out of that space between health and DSS, get it a new home, make it more visible, and hire staff that's not only capable but enthusiastic about getting out in the public and sharing the things that we do, our numbers have reflected that. Last month, we saw 390 people in our office. 390 citizens came in to talk about their veterans' benefits. If you look at that number back in 2015, it would have probably been less than 100. As I go through the report a little further, our daily average, we're averaging, I'm sorry, we're averaging 22 people a day, in person, 25 on the phone. And then I look at our yearly comparison, and I go back to see where, when we kind of cut on the faucet back in 2017 to where we are now, there's a line graph in there, and last month in August, we saw over 1,000 veterans in one month, between in person and on the telephone, and that is remarkable. And as Commissioner Booker and I were talking with Jeff and Jerry, we talked about, what does it take for you guys to be successful, and what is it? And it's compassion, it's understanding what's out there, it's listening to them, being a good communicator, it's all those factors, and I think we've really done a great job of having those assets in our department. And I would just encourage you, I won't continue to go through the report, but I'd encourage you to look at that monthly and see the progress that's being made, and the investment that you guys made a couple years ago to make that department great. Mr. Sir, that's all I have, unless you've got something for me?
Can I just say something? You know, the Veterans Office at one time, most of the veterans were going to other counties because of the office that we had there. And since that time, now the other counties are coming to us.
That's correct. We talked about that. And I still would recommend that you continue to advocate with the state legislature to allocate additional funds to this program. Right now, they send us $2,000 a year, and we cover the rest, and it's not a cheap venture, and it's an investment by them that would make the future brighter.
Sure.
At your suggestion, three or four months ago, I walked into that office, and I didn't know the people in there. But as a veteran, I wanted to see what, if any, particularly because of my hearing, I wanted to see if any benefits were available, and I was impressed, both visits, that visit and again when we went in on Friday, I was just impressed with, well, first of all, there's a Marine there, right? And then there's a Navy guy there. So we got two veterans that are the two key people, and all they wanted to do when I went in there, again, as an individual, was say, "What can we do to help you?" What, you know, I'm gonna go back, I haven't, I didn't take the time that day to do the application thing. But I wasn't here, obviously, when the decision was made to move that out of the big building, but having spent a lot of time with Scott, and also having visited the other piece of that, just going in there would be intimidating for some people to say, "Hey, I gotta go in there, into this big complex, to try to find out, where do I go when I get in there?" And this is so handy and a good location, so I'm really excited about what we're doing there.
Now, it's gonna be hard for them to help you to try to get Civil War records for medical things.
No comment.
Well, no, it was World War I.
I got one question.
Yes, sir.
Would you remind the board that we have meeting Thursday? Don't we have two sessions?
We do. There'll be, starting on Thursday, and there's a group, I think Commissioner Mark, you're in that group that goes in November, that will begin our small group meetings with the Board of Education to talk about their strategic plan, also look at funding options for how that plan will possibly be funded. I know Dr. Doyle and her team have put a lot of work into looking at what their future needs will be, so I just encourage you to show up and take good notes, and we'll work on it.
I think everybody's already gotten their times. If you haven't got your time, seat, Jack, afterwards, they'll give you the times.
Yeah, I think, there's a couple that go in November, yeah, yeah.
So which one will be going in the morning or afternoon?
Check with us after the meeting, and we'll make sure you got the right time.
One thing I just want to bring up, so the board is aware, so they don't get discouraged and everything else. Convention Center has lost two for sure, possibly a third Marine Corps ball, but not because of the convention, because they cannot get hotel rooms.
That's correct.
And everything else, so please don't take that, hold it against the young lady that's got that. She had nothing to do with it, they just do not want to have to drive back across that bridge and everything.
Yep.
After having a good time, so.
We'll continue to have some challenges.
Could not, we still got eight on the books, it's still coming, but we lost two, maybe a possible third one.
Have we heard anything more on the hotel?
I did hear Friday when we were there that there's some permits that have been pulled. I haven't verified that with the city of New Bern, but, I mean, I read the article in the paper, it seemed like they had a plan. Haven't seen the action yet.
They have committed to be open by mid-year next year. I question, given the amount of work that needs to be done, I question that. I would say, it'll be, in my opinion, it'll be a year from now until we see that place open.
It's gonna hurt us.
Yep, yep. Thank you, sir.
At least now we have a date.
We have a dream, we have a dream date. We have a dream date. All right, next on the Commissioner's Report, Commissioner Booker?
Couple things. Jack mentioned that we did a tour on Friday, and we went to all the county facilities that we had not visited earlier this year, and it was really encouraging, and I'll say that encouraging in that while some of our facilities are dated and need some work, and that's always gonna be the case, I just saw a positive group of people. The employees that we encountered were upbeat, positive, they seemed to be enjoying their job, et cetera. One of the stops we made was at the jail and sheriff's office, and a couple things that were, again, encouraging. Our K-9 program appears to be really on track and helping us. While we walked into the sheriff's department, went into a conference room, and there on the table were two gallon containers, and they were full to the brim, it looked like paint cans, full to the brim of green stuff, and the green stuff was weed, and they had just, that morning, Friday morning, they had just, I'll just say, found this in a local shipment that had come into the county. And what they were doing was repackaging it, and it was going to be delivered to the person whose name was on that box, and actually, it was in another county. And then that sheriff was prepared to, as soon as the delivery was made and accepted, then he was going to go in and do his thing, and I assume that happened. So that was neat, because as they explained, they put some boxes on the ground, and the dog went to this box, and that was in a metal can with paper around it, in a box, in a bigger box. So what these dogs can smell is just phenomenal. We got several thousand dollars worth of marijuana, and I think it was coming in from either California or Colorado, and it wasn't for personal use, it was several thousand dollars worth of weed. So that was neat. And then yesterday, excuse me, Saturday, I don't know if you saw the paper this morning, Craven County Sheriff's Office Crime Suppression Unit stopped a vehicle for traffic violation near the intersection of St. Delight Street Road and Collins Street, that's north of Bridston, and during that stop, another K-9 alerted deputies to narcotics in the vehicle. Put my glasses on, I can read better. 20 grams of heroin, 135 grams of methamphetamine, 115 grams of crack cocaine, 60 grams of marijuana, and other items consistent with narcotics distribution, street value $360,000, and these two young folks are currently behind bars, and big-time $2.5 million bond to get out. So our K-9s, sheriff, good work. A bunch of junk poison is not gonna be on the street as a result of these two efforts, so we were... I think I've heard this from our chief of police here in New Bern 10 years ago, he said, "We can't stop crime, but we can convince them that this is not the place to do crime, because if they do it here, they're gonna pay," and that's obviously our goal. We can't stop bad people from trying to profit with this junk. But anyway, commend you for that process that we're going through, and we need to keep it, keep the heat on.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Mr. Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Several things, since my colleague's already been talking about the sheriff's department, I would also mention that Saturday I had the opportunity to go out for the Sheriff's Adopt-a-Thon that he had for animals here in Craven County. Looked like he had a big event, sheriff, he put this event on because of the amount of animals that, you know, they have been with the enforcement side that he's took over, and trying to decrease some of the population we've got at our animal shelter. And how many animals did you have adopted out Saturday, Sheriff?
Seven or eight, Commissioner, that were adopted, so very successful event, about 250 people, dozen vendors. We had a veterinarian and a vet tech on staff to help with the checking process, which was a service we provided, and also an educational component in regards to how to be a good pet owner, and that there is, you know, to be a responsible pet owner, you know, you have things that you must comply with, and how to care for these animals. So very successful event, we look forward to many more.
Thank you for doing it, and I appreciate that. Appreciate what your enforcement side is doing to help the animals in the county. Something that's been a concern to many of our citizens for a number of years, and this board's tried to work on it, we've had countless hours of discussion about that. I don't usually read, and I'm not gonna call their names, I don't usually read things that are sent to me by constituents, but this one is one that has been very concerning to me, and I'll get with staff about it more, they're already aware of it. But we got a citizen in my district who has a bank draft for, and I won't call the company's name, I'll just say it's for services that are for communication, that a lot of other people use in our county. This individual owed for their monthly bill $142.87. The company drafted $14,287 out of their account. This was October the 1st. I talked to this citizen Saturday night, and as of Saturday night, they still not have received their funding, funds back. It's very concerning to me. I was cautious, Mr. County Attorney, not to call the name of the company, but I think this is, if we're gonna do business, this company's gonna do business in Craven County, I think that there's better customer service that can be rendered, and I think that's something that we need to have some strong conversations about. I don't know how many of us have $14,000 just sitting in our checking account. This individual is a widow, and so it's very concerning, and I'm sorry for the situation that they're going through. Also, just to mention, Dover Community has started a fund to try to rebuild their senior center. Years ago, up in Dover, we provided our Meals on Wheels, it went up there to the Dover Senior Center. It's owned by the community, it's not owned by the town of Dover, but they're trying to fix it back up, and they've started a mission to do that, and the mission statement says the following, "The center will provide a building for the citizens of Dover, North Carolina, together for meetings and fellowship. This will be a nonprofit building that will support the surrounding communities, we will support senior citizens with health classes, with medical speakers, nurses. We will also support the youth in the area with adult supervision," and they have other things that they want to do in that building. So what I would say to our fellow citizens that are listening, if anybody has a heart, a desire to assist these individuals up in Dover in repairing this building, please get up with me and let me know, they want to try to save this structure before it is to a point it's not worth saving. And so that's all I have, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Mr. McCabe?
I just have a couple things, let the sheriff know that I forgot to go to the event that Jason Justin mentioned, I wish I was there. But anyway, I'd like to thank sheriff, he's doing a wonderful, wonderful job in Craven County. His deputy with the K-9 dog is doing a wonderful job, we need more, but right now, we gotta do what we have, and he's been tolerating a lot of newspapers, so he has done a extraordinary job in Craven County, and I'd like to applaud him, not applaud him, but thank you for the job you have well done in the county. That's all I have. Oh, I just forgot to go to the seafood festival this weekend, I was tied up, I mean, not tied up, roped.
That was two weeks ago.
No, the one this weekend.
This weekend was the chili festival.
I meant the chili festival, I did go to the seafood festival in Carrot County, I forgot, this is the chili festival, I didn't attend because I had obligations. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
That's it, right?
Oh, yeah, that's it. If I'm thinking of more, I'll come back after John has finished his.
Mr. Johnny?
Yes, I'd just like to say, I thank the sheriff for the job that he's doing in our community. I have some problems in our community, and I had talked to, I bet I talked to sheriff one time before, and we both get together and try to get something done, but we have a lot of young people running the streets, and I know the problem is, when the kids get put out of school, there's nowhere to go, but up and down the street for some of them. And it creates a lot of problems with 11 and 12-year-old kids running up and down the street, and these kids, they've been, I talked about this several times before, they've been running, well, right in front of my house when a group were working on the house and that, and his girlfriend and he had had a bicycle out there on the porch, and they took both bicycles, and the lady saw them take them, so she just about run them down and got the bicycles back, but they talked some kind of bad about her. And from what I can understand, the parent was in jail, the lady... The lady, the, the mama was in jail. And, and these kids, they still run the street. They had a problem out there last night. They were out there in the street throwing. One lady come over our house and said, "I, I talked to the little kids out there and they talked so much junk." I started to get out and, "Well, I'm..." I said, "No, you can't do that." But these, these kids, it's terrible walking the street. We're going to have to do something about how we can, if these kids' parents get put in jail and get put out of school and they're children that run the, run the street, we just begging for the jail to be full and for someone to get hurt. So, we really need to come up with something with the school system. I don't know how we're going to do it. I'm not that smart already. But I know with kids running the street, I know it's an accident rather than happen. And we, we, we need to try to organize the school system and work together and try to pick up something so if, if the kids do get put out of school, I know our Barbara Lee got a place down there and we wouldn't, we didn't get her, had a problem getting her phone to keep those kids, those older kids getting put out of school, somewhere to go. Now, we need somewhere to go for these young kids to get put out of school. And I don't, I don't know where it's going to be on, if they get put out in the street, or maybe we can put them somewhere in the school with some other class that we can keep up with these kids. We say, "Well, we ain't got money enough to do it." But I tell you, when you start spending money on the jail, you can take that money that you're going to spend and spend it on these kids running the street. But once they're running the street, they're not learning anything about how to do something devilish or how to get tied up in drugs, and that's another cause, and how to get tied up in the court system, that's another court or cause. So, we, we need to think about it. I take a lot of thought, it's nothing, I, I haven't reached the decision myself, but maybe working together, we can get something done to try to get these kids off the street because it's getting more and more of them, the kids, the street running up, creating disturbance. And I know it's not just in my neighborhood, it's in other communities too, unless having to know more about it in my neighborhood. And some of the parents, some of them you can't talk to. So, but sometime we have to put some in there, but we don't want to put too many in there because I know how few years ago, it cost us so much money with the jail system and people being put in jail and staying in jail, costing the county. Another, another thing I, I'd like to talk about is about our banking system. I had had our money in the bank and somebody was, I don't know how they were doing, write a check on my account for about six months. I didn't catch it, but my daughter caught it. And, and the bank, the only thing they paid me back for one month that they had let other people cash money on my account. I don't know, I don't know where these slick crooks come from, but it looked like the banks would have some, some type of protection for the people that's putting money in there and saving and then checking. Because there's some slick guys out here now, they're a lot smarter than I am because I don't know how to write a check in the bank and cash. They all want to cash my check sometime. So, so, so we, we, we need to think about these things and protect our citizens, especially the senior citizens. They, they really work on them. Most of the young people, they know how to work these computers and they, they, they can stop and taking their money out of it, but I don't know how to work a computer that way. Or these crooks are slick. That's all I have.
Next, Chair?
I have nothing to report other than I was on vacation and I went to an Oktoberfest up in Sugar Mountain.
Sugar Mountain. No comment. Thank you, sir. Couple of things to bring up. First of all, everybody remember, starting Thursday, Ghost Walk, Thursday, Friday, and Saturday in New Bern, the Ghost Walk. If you haven't been, it's time. And I invite everybody on the board, since the center is open now, is to go by the convention center and take a look because you'll be, you're going to be surprised and amazed. Second floor is still not completely all done, but everything downstairs, functional-wise and everything, you need to, you need to take a look at it and see it on there. Cherry Point's got a lot of things going on, a lot of construction being started. First of the year, FRCs will start receiving the thirty-five additional F-35s for retrofit. So, that's a big, big deal for them. If you're on the base here, come after the first of the year. Sixth Street down there where all the hangars are at, they're already started their first hangar demolition. First of the year, a lot more will be coming down to get ready and get prepared for the F-35. So, that's, that's moving along. I think we all know, if you haven't been down to Havelock, the bypass is already started. They're already tearing down, the five houses are already gone. They're starting the trailer park real soon. Out on Lake Road, they've already started declaring for where it's going to go. So, there's a lot of work going in and everybody's aware of the surveying that's going on for James City has already started for starting that project. So, there's a lot of things happening, a lot of things going on. Does anybody have any last comments? Commissioner McCain?
No, sir.
All right, sir.
Make a motion to adjourn?
Got a motion?
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Stand up.